A call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee on Monday, January 29th, 2024. The meeting is being recorded and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join us.
(inaudible) to the flag, the United States of America, into the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Okay, so the first order of business is our consent agenda. There was two meeting minutes in the packet and if, depending on what time you looked at your agenda, there was an update for, to add a third warrant. So one payroll, one expense, and one manual warrant. And a memo is in the packet as well for an approval of donation to the Westford Academy for a scoreboard on the baseball fields. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. And a second?
Seconded.
And Chris with the second. All those in favor? We have to do a roll call because Catherine, it's virtual. Ming Chen?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Bill?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven, zero.
Thank you for the donation.
Yes.
That's incredibly generous.
I'm going to move on to public comment. So a reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please limit public, please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone in, in person, sorry. Please feel free to start.
Hi, so my name is Kristen Thomas and I am one of the math interventionists. I'm at Christopher Lee School and I'm going to read a statement prepared by all of the interventionists. We have been listening to the meetings and we've heard people ask about what the changes might look like if all the interventionist positions were eliminated. So these are just some of our thoughts. So eliminating 26 math and reading interventionist positions and three literacy specialists in the six elementary schools would virtually destroy our intervention model and would affect all students. Replacing 26 interventionist positions with six academic coaches would drastically reduce the supports currently in place to meet the needs of struggling students. We, the interventionists, feel strongly that eliminating the intervention model, forgive me, after valuing interventionists in our town for decades would decimate the foundational stone Westford has deemed vital all these years. The excellence of Westford Academy rests on the strong foundation of our elementary education. Crumbling the foundation will see aftershocks of effects in the whole school system for years to come. So what would this change look like in our schools? So in the current intervention model, there are three to six math and reading interventionists per school and one to two literacy specialists per school. That will change in the new, if, if there is no override, future intervention would consist of one literacy specialist and one academic coach per school. So in the current intervention model, there are 26 math and reading interventionists and nine literacy specialists in all six schools, which would be replaced, if there was no override, with only six literacy specialists and six academic coaches in all six schools. So currently, there are 550 students receiving intervention in groups of one to four students. And the change with no override, that would be reduced to only 156 students receiving intervention in groups of one to four students. So approximately 400-plus students will no longer receive intervention services in reading and math.
So I'm going to pass it on to Kristen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristen Merrick. I'm a math interventionist at Jack. And I'm going to continue where Kristen left off. Some factors to consider with this impending loss. With only one literacy specialist and one academic coach at each building, there is an equity issue that we're concerned with as the buildings do not have the same number of students. Schools with a larger population will be underserved more acutely. There are six and a half hours per school day to work with students. Integrated arts schedules and the schedules of other services, ELL, speech and language, sped, OT, PT, et cetera, will be scheduled first. Just the limits of scheduling will leave many students out of intervention services given only one literacy specialist and one academic coach. If it is assumed that the academic coach would focus solely on math, there will be two to three math intervention blocks per grade level per school. Currently, there are at least six math groups per grade level. Decisions will need to be made as to who will receive intervention and who will not. Most of the intervention would become the classroom teacher's responsibility. All students will have less dedicated teacher time. Without dedicated curriculum coordinators and with fewer literacy specialists and interventionists, who will assess and interpret student data? Without accurate data analysis, it will be more difficult to identify and serve the neediest of our students. Research shows that being on grade level in reading and math by third grade is a huge predictor of future academic success. Our current interventionists are highly educated, highly trained, and are serving hundreds of students. Those students are making progress and they are being released, so room is being made for more students to receive these services. Filling gaps in content, knowledge, and skills is the way to develop a confident, curious, lifelong learner, which is Westford's mission. In the end, please do not eliminate Westford's jewel, the foundational stone that builds and prepares Westford's strong learners for their future. Once the interventionist program is eliminated and its highly educated and trained staff is laid off, you will never get this program back. And it is the students who will suffer, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
I'm Amy Dobski. I am at 11 Queens Way Circle and I am a literacy specialist over at Abbott. So I just want to punctuate what was already mentioned. We didn't even mention the middle school cuts. So where, where those numbers were just K to five. So we would have to think about all the other kids. These are filtering into our high school. So this, the effect is massive. We, just to kind of talk a little bit about what the wind block does, we free up those teachers so that they can work with all students, the average, the high. So this isn't just going to affect the parents who have kids that are in intervention. We didn't mention about the effect of the sped system, which we all know is very expensive. There would be no middle ground between a tier-one classroom teacher and sped. We will burn out those classroom teachers because these intervention kiddos would be back in the classroom. The class sizes would increase and they would have no one to support them and they will, the, the sped referrals will rise just naturally by the conditions that will be set forth. And in addition to things we do besides small group instruction, we universally screen the entire population, every school, K to two, three to five. We screen every student three times a year. We catch those kids and we, we bring them in and we intervene. And many of them go back. I have numerous parents that have told me that I, that we, our team across the district have made all the difference. And that, like I said, that provides a foundation for middle school and high school. We don't equate success with numbers like MCAS, but I know a lot of people do, especially on the outside looking in. I came from Chelmsford. I taught 14 years in Chelmsford, right next door. We looked over at Westford and said, what are they doing different? I left my literacy position and Chelmsford, come to Westford because your intervention model was top-notch. You caught them early, your numbers show. And I think if we remove that bridge, the bridge between the tier-one classroom and the special ed department, our district will implode as we know it and the structure will not be there. And it will have such a ripple effect that we will never have that reputation, that stellar reputation that we're known for. So it's, it really is just, it's way more than just the numbers of kids that we service. And like I said, it would, it will never, never be, never be brought back. The research shows that being on grade level in reading and math by third grade will determine your academic future. And, and that's what we're dealing with. And again, I'm not even talking from the middle school perspective. This is huge. This is, this is big. And we, we, we think like, okay, this is, this is a lot of money. I know there's families out there that this would take its toll, but we are known for our education department. We are, people move here for our education. So the, the effects on property values will be nothing compared to what an override would cost. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody thinking of coming up or are you guys? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Feel free to stay, but sometimes the meetings go late, so we understand if you, if you don't. We're going to move on to informational updates and start with the superintendent.
Thank you. We wanted to share with all of you that the, the middle school, the middle school music program is proud to announce that 12 of the students across both Blanchard and Stony Brook were selected into the Eastern District Music Festival. So it's something that we like to celebrate every single year. We also want to thank the, the staff that we know have worked closely with them to help prepare them and to encourage them to do this because one of the things that they talk about every year, which I think is great, is they talk about the courage that it takes to audition, right? And so there were 150 students auditioned for the festival. 395 were accepted to either be in band, the chorus, or the orchestra ensembles. And so we just want to commend all of our, the students, the 12 from the middle schools that will be a part of it. It takes place in March at, they'll have a concert at Lincoln Sudbury High School. And so we just extend our congratulations.
The 2024-25 preschool lottery is scheduled to take place on March 6th with a snow date of March 7th. So any interested community member who has a student who will be three years old by September 1st of next year and not already enrolled with Westford Public School Services, you are welcome to apply for one of our PlayPal tuition-paying spots at either Nab Nassett, Miller, or Robinson School. Our applications can be found on our website at westfordk12.us. And you'll also find more information in there about the tuition, the hours of operation, and any other kind of age limit or that's, that's required.
Do we have, on the website or handy, do you have information about how many spots are available? Because I know there's usually high demand, right, and a waitlist?
It's always high demand. I'm not sure if they articulated this year how many open spots there would be. If everything was available, which it's not, it would traditionally be about 16 students per school. They're welcome for a four-day Monday through Thursday opening. And it does not, it's, it's a rolling admissions process. So just because somebody might have already put in their name doesn't mean that they have a higher chance of hitting the lottery at that point, so. And also, last week, Robinson kicked off their Great Kindness Challenge with a kindness tunnel that some of us participated in. The staff members and community members welcomed students on Monday with a tunnel and kids were cheered on, signs, pom-poms, high-fives. There were a couple, a lot of smiles, a lot of students jumping into the arms of their teachers and staff members, a couple rolling the eyeballs, and even a preschooler who was blowing kisses as she was coming through the tunnel.
And like a, like a, like a.
For the Queens Way.
We had the princess wave going on. So, so this day did kick off a full week of kindness challenge at Robinson with other spirit activities that took place. So kudos to them.
Great. Thank you. School committee updates. Looking over here first.
Policy met.
Yeah.
And so we're looking at a range of policies, including, we've got some that deal with things such as curriculum selection, library book, material, library materials, classroom materials, because we're, we want to make sure that we're up to date and have the best, best policy we can regarding those types of things. We know that we're seeing conversations nationally about materials used in schools in the classroom and make sure that we're, you know, protecting our educators to make sure that we're using the most up-to-date, appropriate materials that we can. And so we're just looking, taking a look, we'll probably refresh some of those policies. There, as we talk about often, there's a batch of policies that were put into place quite a while ago, and most of these fall under that category, which means they have not been touched in many, many years. So that's also part of our ongoing work to review all of our policies in a timely manner.
Great. ALPAC was last week and their folks from ALPAC are, from Westford are going to join with other ALPACs to have like a broader event. The details of that are still being finalized and I will. Awesome. That sounds good. Any other updates?
Start times. Start times, we met.
We met.
Start times subcommittee. And so we actually, we've been looking at, we've talked in the past, in our past updates have talked about looking at alternative start bell times for our schools. And we've come to the conclusion that in order to better understand what's feasible and what might be doable, we might want to look at software, routing software that's out there that you could, that we could use. And so we've actually been evaluating and do, not evaluating, but doing some demos and talking to some representatives, some, some companies that do that. There's a cost with that. We need to talk about that down the line, if that's something that makes sense. But we think in order, you know, in order to best optimize our bus routes, that might be an approach we want to take. And so I already talked to you guys, we're going to try to meet this Friday and just get you up to date on what we've been doing, what we've looked at, and what the possibilities might be going forward.
Great. Thank you. Catherine, anything? Any update? Okay.
I have a couple community things that I've been sent that I just wanted to mention. The, there's a parent support group for caregivers of children struggling with their mental health, the, from the Westford Health Department and the Community Wellness Department, and that meets the second Thursday of every month. And that information should be on the town website and I think could also be added to this week's district billboard. There's also a WA, I think we've said it before in a different meeting, but the WA Lunar New Year Celebration, sorry, not WA, it's hosted by the WA Asian Culture Club and Chelmsford Chinese Language School, but it's, it takes place at Westford Academy. And that information will, on, it's, the event takes place on February 10th and that information will also be in the billboard. Westford is changing our solid waste vendor, so our trash pickup is happening sooner rather than, sooner than expected because of a unforeseen circumstance with our current vendor. So starting next Monday, nothing will, yes. And they, yeah, the, the town manager's office, you know, worked quickly to find another substitute so that there was no lapse in service, but nothing should really just stay the same. But they did reiterate that the timing could be different, so just to make sure you have your bins out at 7:00 AM on the day, like your dates should stay, your dates will, days will stay the same and the holidays will stay the same, but just to get your bins out. And I had one more. Oh, just new on the town website today is a program from the Board of Health for PFOS testing for private drinking well water, drinking water wells. And I think that's first come, first served for about 50 residential households. So applying for that project is, and information for that is on the town website. And I just, I know we get a couple viewers for budget conversations, so I just wanted to use that broadcast. And from a school committee update, finance subcommittee met and superintendent evaluation subcommittee met, but those will come up in later. Thanks. Okay, students, sorry.
Yeah, so at Westford Academy, all last week was midterms and last Tuesday, the quarter closed. I think a lot of students are now less stressed that midterms are over. And quarter three has started, which means students that have half-year classes switch to their new half-year classes. And I'm pretty, I believe that the semester one grades come out tomorrow for all WA students.
Yeah, I know grades are due tomorrow. Quarter three means seniors last full quarter unless you've got APs. And especially with seniors now winding down, juniors are now going to start winding up about college. And so I know on the upcoming advisory, it's either tomorrow or Wednesday, juniors are going to get a big presentation about like the next four years. And then tomorrow is the junior parent seminar at 6:30 in the PAC.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for that. We could move on to our first business item, which is a school calendar review and vote of next year's school year.
Okay, so we're taking a second look at the calendar for 2024 and 25, with students returning to school on August 28th and then tentatively ending on June 18th. Since our last meeting, there were several adjustments that were made. Dewali was, will be observed on Friday, November 1st. We had it on October 31st previously. The Lunar New Year has been added and will be observed on Wednesday, January 29th. Our early release days that we had scheduled for February 4th and March 4th are now being moved to Wednesday, February 5th, and Wednesday, March 5th. The tentative last day was pushed out by one day to June 18th. And we added a link to the multicultural calendar on the reverse side of the, of the calendar itself.
Thank you. And just to add context to that, that's the calendar from the town DEI committee that they have a standalone website for, month by month, with a helpful description of several observances and holidays. So I think it's great to, that we're going to be sort of connecting families to that resource. I just, I, if, if you print it, you don't get the link of that, so I wondered if we could.
Write it out?
Yeah.
Sure.
With the, because, yeah, if you print it, you don't get the link to that.
Okay.
Any, oop.
If, if we're going to do that, then the link will probably fit underneath that phrase, right? And we might specifically say that it's the, the town DEI committees and then have it right underneath.
Sure.
Does that, does that make sense?
I think so. That sounds good to me. Any reactions, questions?
Looks great.
Great work.
Calendar. Is everybody, any reactions to the new format?
I love the new format.
I like it. It's a good look.
It's really clear.
Yep. People, like when we did do it, people were like, wow, wait a second.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion. Yep. Seconded.
Bill, thank you. All those in favor? Catherine?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Bill?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Thank you. Great. We'll move right along then. Superintendent goals.
Okay.
Want me to speak a little bit about?
Yeah.
So the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, which is myself, Chris, and?
Yes.
Bill, sorry, I'm blanking because finance overlap. We met, we have been meeting monthly. We do approve our, when we approve our minutes, we do add them to the packet for other members to peruse.
It's Sean, did you say?
I'm sorry, I did.
It's okay.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, sorry, Sean. It's Sean, Chris, and myself. And what was I saying? Oh, yeah.
We met?
Yeah, we met.
We've been meeting.
We've been meeting. And there are minutes and we do, we had one last week to try to sort of align on expectations for a mid-year review. And we talked through what the status of several goals were and talked through what do we expect to see at the end of the year, right? So that the evaluation process sometimes in the past can cause some concern at the end or, or if you're not sure what you're expecting and it's, can create a lot of work too. So we're trying to have this, this group meet throughout the year to just sort of have these steps and check-ins, so.
Right. So in, in that conversation, we did, we talked about the goals. I provided an update to the committee about progress towards the goals. And then we had talked about maybe throwing just some talking points on some slides. That's what the purpose of this is. It's not as nice of a slideshow as the school committee is. It's just a basic slideshow. But what I did is I just took each goal and then just put a couple of different pieces. Sometimes it's just the calendar meeting, sometimes it's, I do have one that we talked about for the fourth goal where I, I have a recommendation that we can kind of talk about as to whether we shift that. And then in the last slide, it's just going to talk about the actual standards that we've also identified. So in the first, for the first goal, that focuses, again, the, the third year of the new superintendent induction program. So I just shared the dates that have already taken place and just shared just some points as to the things that we've been talking about. And so one of the things that I'd heard from the committee before was maybe some more reflection in the evidence as to what I'm taking away from that program. So I plan to give you more specific reflection about the way things have been, the way that things have impacted my leadership and/or the district in our, in the final evidence later. But the idea that one of the things, when we first started this year and we were creating the goals, they hadn't shared with us specifically what we're going to be doing in the third year, so I wanted to share that with you, that with our, with our first, we had two all-day in-person PDs on the 21st and the 16th. And that's covered a number of things, including looking at initiative planning, progress monitoring, benchmarking, and mid-course correction. Pretty much coming out of the strategic plan process was really the way in which they, they sort, the context that they, that they talked with us about that. Another thing that they've been doing with us is different types of calibration about providing support when there's targeted teaching practices and sustaining change. I will say, I thought, I was a little surprised that they were doing that with us because I would have thought that the majority of people who'd become superintendents would have had significant experience doing evaluations at the building level. That might not be the case. So that was, that sort of surprised me. And then one of the other things that they've been talking about this year and we're continuing to talk about throughout the year is just looking at our personal leadership skills, specifically in a contentious climate, outside of our budget. I would like to think that things aren't necessarily really all that contentious here, which I'll knock on something, but I, but it was, it's an important thing for us to be able to reflect on. We talked about just the different, our natural leadership skills and styles and what, you know, we, when, when we recognize that, then what adjustments might, might we need to make in terms of communicating for various audiences. So I thought that was interesting. And then with the small group consultancy, they take a number of the superintendents and they put us together consultancy group. And we have shorter meetings. Those are approximately two and a half hours long. And what we've been doing is utilizing a specific problem-solving protocol, which just involves a round of in-depth questions, clarifying questions, and then in-depth questions, more probing questions after someone has shared a problem of practice. And so the first session, I was listening to other districts share their problems of practice. And then in the most recent one, the 19th, I shared a problem of practice here in Westford, which, and I focused primarily on our budget challenges and talked about the, the differences between what we have put into different columns, you know, and getting their feedback from their perspective as well, too. So that, that was, that's what's been going on with that goal. So that, that was, that's what's been going on with that goal. The second goal, the Sense of Belonging goal, we do have, it took us a little while to get these scheduled, but our middle school, both middle schools have scheduled professional development for, with, for teachers to develop community circles with restorative practices. And those are scheduled for February sixth, March nineteenth, and April second. And they'll be taking place here in, in the Conference Room B. They're spread out so that the teachers can then be going back and trying different strategies in between each one of the sessions with their advisories, so that then they're able to get feedback. And that'll be part of the, the benchmarks that we talked about in the actual goals will be student feedback, teacher feedback in terms of this PD and in terms of the actual rollout of this work. Additionally, Westford Academy's been, some participants, administrative participants have been participating in virtual trainings that start in December. And then there's another session that's been going through January. And so that's helping us as we prepare to develop a plan as to how Westford Academy will then be rolling out community circles in the future. So that's again, part of this goal. And then finally, our, our town, the Wellness Coordinator, Nicole Lavignette, and, and Gerard Coughlin, our Director of Special Ed and Social Emotional Learning, they've been collaborating on a number of things. The groups that we had talked about for the, the specific groups for elementary schools that were talked about last spring haven't started yet. We are talking about whether we might want to put that funding towards the community wellness...
Mobile clinician.
The mobile clinician, clinician that is supporting the similar age group. So they're still working on what is the best way to, to work there. Then the third goal is developing the new ten-year master plan. And so Jeff Goodwin, the Director of Facilities, he and I have been meeting on Thursdays from the beginning of the year, and Valerie started joining us in December. And so we have a standing meeting every single Thursday. The first meetings that we had, we were preparing to meet with principals. We were looking at the SMMA feasibility study ourselves. And we're also talking about this work in group, the three of us, trying to, trying to identify what is the best format in which to articulate the ten-year plan. What should that look like when we bring that back to the committee in the spring? And then the other thing that we've done is that we've scheduled onsite meetings with all of the building principals. So the next few months or next few weeks, our meeting takes place at the building. We meet with the building principal. We talk about the priority, the recommendations that SMMA had for each building within the feasibility report. We are trying to identify what those priorities should be. We, and we do a walkthrough of the building with the principal. It's each, each one of those conversations has been different so far because the buildings are, the, the needs are different. And we've been focused first, the first meeting was at the day school, and then we've met at Abbott, and the next one's scheduled for Robinson. And they're scheduled to, really the mid-March, I'm trying to remember, I think they go through mid-March, mid-March by the time in order for us to hit all of the, the buildings. And then another piece of this entire goal is the work that we're doing with the MSBA. And so the fact that we've been invited into the eligibility period with the MSBA for the Robinson School, we're going to, as I shared with you earlier, we're going to need to develop another SOI for the Abbott School, because that's part of the potential consolidation that they've, that they've identified already. So we have to have that data in their database. And though most of that work in the eligibility period outside of the SOI for Abbott, that's not going to start until the SAR, because that's in our timeline. They stagger all of the districts that they invite into the program, and they tell us when the timeline starts, and our timeline starts in August. So then we will have a very detailed set of instructions as to what we, what documents we have to have submitted to them by certain dates, when new votes have to take place just for that eligibility period as well. And then the last goal was one that we talked about quite a bit because the, we feel like the, the goal itself, as I talk about where we are in the progress, we might want to think about adjusting this. And so if we were to adjust the goal, unlike in a, in regular education evaluations where the evaluator meets with the, the educator and they could make any adjustments without a specific, without, without formality to it, you have voted on these goals. And so any adjustments that we make to it, well, I think that's something that you can talk about as to what, what we should do. But we, we met, we had a subgroup meet from the DEI team, from the, from the Schools DEI team that met together to review the different proposals. From that, from that group, we had identified one specific group that we were most interested in. We then had a smaller group that met with that organization, had follow-up questions. And since then, which I shared with you earlier, we, we, we reached out and we have signed a contract with the American Institute for Research, which go, they go by AIR, to conduct this equity audit. Their proposal, which is one of the things that the, that the review team liked specifically, was that their proposal spans two years. So we're now looking at the original goals, all of the key actions, the benchmarks, and the success criteria are really right now bound in, by June twenty twenty-four. So the recommendation after the conversation that we had with the subcommittee was to consider adjusting the goal timeline and/or the specific time-bound language in the key action benchmarks and success criteria to reflect the new two, two-year timeline recommended by the outside organization. So it doesn't really change, when we looked at it and, and as I reviewed it, it doesn't change the actual action items or the benchmarks or what the success criteria. It's just about the length of time that, that we are anticipating. So we talked about, well, do we adjust the goal so that we have very specific things by June twenty-four? Or do we talk about having it be a two-year goal? So those are the different things that I think we can talk about in a minute. And then the last piece that I just wanted to share was just in one of the conversations that we had specifically about the standards. The standards that were identified are, are, do impact all of the goals, but one of the things that they also do is, in many ways, they support the budget process. And so one of the things we talked about is that this year's budget process has been so unique that I just wanted to mention, and one of the things we had talked about is that a, a lot of the evidence for these standards can be observed throughout this budget process. And then I intend to share additional evidence as well in the spring, but it was something that as we think in terms of the progress towards meeting these standards, I think a large chunk of the budget work can be, can actually be supported in these different standards. So that's what I've just shared, and I know...
Great. Thank you. First, I'll open it up to the Subcommittee, Sean or Chris, if there's anything you wanted to add there.
No, I, I just want to say that I appreciate Dr. Chu doing such a involved presentation mid-year, right? I, I think it's one of the things that we talked about, that it would be nice to have an update like this. So I appreciate you doing it in light of everything else that's going on with the district right now, so.
And it's like creates that, like Evans folder, right? Like it, it's just like another, that paperwork trail that we look for in June to remind ourselves when we're sitting down with that not cumbersome document this year.
Because we're going to redo it. I think I was going to do that, wasn't I?
So I think, unless anyone has specific questions, which, which we can open up to, but there is a point to discuss, which is on, as Dr. Chu said, on Goal Four, the Equity Audit Goal, do you want to switch to the...
The actual document, yeah, the goals.
In our...
Oh, yeah. What's the quickest place?
Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee drive.
Yeah.
We have to go to meetings and then...
Yep.
That goal is written as if the equity audit would run parallel to this school year. So there's key actions about providing access to stakeholders for gathering feedback, developing action items based on audit findings, discussing findings at each school SAC meeting in the spring, conducting a virtual public webinar to... Families. And clearly, as, as we were saying, like that, those things won't really be available as action items until probably next spring. So something we could do as a committee is we could say, what we don't want to do is leave it untouched and get to June and then say, you didn't meet your goal, right? This is, this has evolved for all good reasons, and so now this is more of a two-year process. So we could extend the date of the, of these and keep the action items, or sort of come up with new action items that mark the, the, the things that we think would happen this year.
Like potentially gathering information maybe by the end of, you know, from different stakeholders as we prepare for this new two-year timeline? I mean, seems like something that, and I don't know. I'm looking at some of those in the middle of the key actions there, you know? Stakeholders and gathering feedback. I mean, that's actionable, that might be easy enough to do and without revamping the whole goal.
Any other thoughts on this? Oh, Catherine's hands up.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it rolling into a second year goal. And I think, like Bill was saying, you know, now that we've contracted with them, there will be still, there, I anticipate there would still be some sort of progress between now and June. So even just in presenting, kind of keeping us up to date on where it is and what has happened, you know, with, with the, like with schedules and stuff like that, I think that's fine.
Thanks, Catherine. Any other, I'm sorry if we ignored your hand earlier. Did you have any other feedback on all four goals or the standards?
I did just have one question on the, I'm blanking on, on the kind of the professional development, the Sense of Belonging, there we go, M, goal. It mentioned specifically the restorative practices, PD happening at the middle school. But I know we had also secured funding, ARPA funding for the collaborative problem-solving professional development at the elementary schools. So I was just curious as to where we were on, on that.
Yeah, so we're, we've actually been looking to, to, to secure who would be delivering that professional development, and it's specifically with the leadership teams. So we were looking to, to bring them into one of our spring principal meetings, either one or two, depending on who that is. And Courtney's reached out to a couple of different possible people who, you know, who were trained in collaborative problem solving, to figure out what would be our best option.
Right. Well, we did speak with Dr. Avalon, a small subset of principals and myself, as well as Gerard Coughlin, just to see what our options might be. And as generous as the allocation is, it really doesn't cut too deep when you're looking at collaborative problem solving and, and the costs associated with that PD. So he was going to tailor something for us to get, to let us know in just kind of hearing where we were and what we were looking for, like what he would recommend for our district this spring. To be able to do.
Courtney, did you reach out to Dr. Ross Green? Because I know he does the same, and it's that same approach, and just I believe his rates might be slightly different.
Okay.
I thought we had reached out to Dr. Green previously, though, just not...
Not for this, no.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think, I'd feel, I'd feel better if we formally come to a conclusion on, on how we want to approach the fourth goal. I, I'm personally comfortable with either tailoring it such, such that we can do something in, in this year, or merely just saying we're going to make it a two-year goal. There's certainly precedent for that. We've done that before. I think, I mean, I'm certainly satisfied with what has happened up until now on it, right? Like we've, we've made the progress that, that we can make, and, you know, we've, we've contracted with, with AIR. And so I, I personally feel the need to have something at the end of this year that we evaluate versus extending it, but, you know, I can see benefits to doing it either way than what the rest of the committee is feeling on that.
So it's, I'm trying to keep track. Catherine said she'd be open to extending it two years. I don't know where to place your comment yet in which bucket. Bill, Bill's suggestion was to maybe add some...
If there was an easy, easy enough, you know, what the work that Dr. Chu's already doing in terms of gathering data for, from stakeholders, that would close by the end of the spring, you know, but we just rubber stamp that boom, you know?
And you are reminding me, too, that I think, and we could double-check ASC documents on this, but I think even with a two-year goal, there is sort of like, I mean, we would still have a check-in or something like right at the end of this year.
Like a formative, yeah.
It's not that like, you know, there's no...
That was one of the things we talked about, meaning like when we, when we consider the way in which it's, it's, it has been established for the educator evaluation system, two-year goals, then people want to know, are you making effective progress towards the goal? Like that in itself? Or are you not making effective progress? Or have you, and sometimes it is possible, sometimes a teacher will set a goal that they think is going to take two years, but then they actually, they actually meet the goal in the first year. So that, that, that is sometimes possible. But I have, if the committee is comfortable with changing the, the timeline so that instead of everywhere it says twenty twenty-four, we change that to twenty twenty-five, knowing that then when I present the evidence in the spring, my goal will be to show you that I'm making effective progress towards that, that, that's not something I'm concerned about. I'm not, I don't feel the need to have like, you know, have it checked off and, and then start a new goal next year specifically. I just want it to be something that the committee, you know, is comfortable with.
The other...
That's, that's the camp I meant.
Okay.
After hearing that good explanation of...
So should probably, do we need a vote on it?
Motion.
It's like, I would vote on it.
Motion to extend Goal Four to a two-year timeline?
Yeah, and, and changes as...
Changes as, action items as needed, yeah.
You know, I, do you have that one up still?
Not a...
It would just be, there's a couple places where June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four is mentioned, spring twenty twenty-four for SAC meetings, FY twenty-five school improvement plans, so all of that would just kind of get bumped out a year. And then in June, like you said, we would talk about and rate on effective progress. Everybody good with that? So Bill made a motion. Chris seconded. Thank you. Anybody, any questions or other discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Sean?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll continue meeting. I think we said maybe we'll meet in like February or March to keep checking in for the spring. Okay, great. We are moving on to School Committee Goals, which is new for us to have a mid-year review.
Can you slideshow this?
Thank you, Catherine, for putting together a slideshow for us to discuss.
Yeah, not that one. It's in the packet, it's actually in the packet program. I know, we talked about this.
Yeah. So you obviously hopefully remember in the fall, we voted on School Committee Goals that we were going to hold ourselves accountable to?
If we still remember. Or they are.
Well, we can discuss that. So, yeah. So Goal One, you can remind yourself of the text, I'm not going to read it, but, you know, I think we had some initial conversations coming out of the retreat about how to sort of weave some more data collection and into our packets and into our decisions. The guidelines for School Committee Presentations, Catherine and I did work on that in the beginning of the year, and, and through Cathy have sent them through the superintendent's office to presenters that we have coming to us. So hopefully that has some, some help with streamlining and refining people's presentations, our guests' presentations. I wrote discuss on the next action item because I, I don't think it's been happening so far, and I was wondering if, if there's value in that. So originally read Colleit requested data and make it available to all committee members via Google Drive. And I, I think maybe it sounded good in the summer, but seems like, it sounds like an extra step now to me. And like I said, I don't think we've been keeping up with that specifically. Catherine, did you want to weigh in on, on your recollection of this from the retreat or anything?
Yeah, my memory was just that, you know, if, if I send a request or an email looking for some data or, you know, Ming Chen or whatever, that while I might get the answer or information, it's actually something maybe that the rest of the committee should also have and be aware of. And I think that was kind of the thinking behind it. And I know we kind of do something like it with the budget, you know, and we kind of place questions and create a sheet. And I think the idea was kind of that there was just a place that that information could kind of live for school committee members to kind of go in and access and, and just see what kind of data or information is coming out. But I don't think we had anything exactly like a process identified or kind of how, you know, how that would look like.
And do you have any reflections now on where we, where we are?
And I, I think in some ways we probably could do better. You know, I think even again, some of it is, you know, I think of it again, like, you know, a new school committee member comes on, that there's a folder there, even with just some basic data numbers of, this is how many students, this is the breakdown of our student staff population in terms of, you know, high needs, cultural backgrounds, et cetera, you know, staff information, just, you know, a lot of that kind of, I think we see a lot of that maybe sometimes in the, the conference we attend, you know, especially if we have other school systems getting up on some of the panels, they'll kind of give you a snapshot. And I know we've kind of touched on some of it through our hiring group that had been working with, and I forget his name now, I'm blanking, I think it was last year, and that Kerry had originally been working with the group, that they were kind of starting to compile this. So I think there is, there is some value in, in kind of creating that, that general data information. But Chris, no doubt has some idea on how it would be organized, the master of Google Drive.
Maybe, but I'm, I'm, I'm first trying to strain to remember the conversation from the summer, unfortunately. But I also, the thoughts that occur to me now outside the space of the retreat where we, where we talked about this and formulated these goals, a couple of things come to mind. One is that some of what we're talking about sounds like data that could just generally be useful to the public, maybe. You know, maybe that's something that lives on the website or i- if it's, if it's of general public interest, you know, data about the district, I think that's, it'd be an interesting thing. A lot of that you can get off Desi's website, right?
I was going to say the, the DART, the DART database is a really nice one-stop shop.
Right.
I can pour over numbers for a long time, but it's all public.
For the committee, a little primer on where to get that data and where you can, you know, the links that you can click to to go get that data. So that's one thing that comes to mind. The other thing that comes to mind is that really anything that's coming before us, because we need to be decision makers, you know, often should be in a, in a packet, right? There should be an agenda item in a packet. And, and, and specific requests for data typically should go through the chair and then to the superintendent. So part of me kind of says, well, maybe the right thing for specific instances, if there's something specific, we want to see interim data about this, then that request, because we have a decision to make, that goes through the chair and then that ends up in a packet. So that, I see that being one set, one approach to doing some of the data. And then, like I said, maybe the other is we could write up a little sheet on where to get DART data, where to get other dis, you know? Cause a lot of that stuff that we just cited changes throughout the year, changes over time. And so asking somebody to do that frequently, whose job is it to update that? I think we have to think about that.
Right.
Yeah. Can I say one thing? Because a part of, in, when Catherine was talking about, it was Lawrence Alexander who, who we worked with last year. And so that, in, in, in many ways, yes, we're talking about updating and creating our profile, right? Which is the other piece, like that general data, which we do have, we have our profile that is shared. It's, it's established every single year because it's, it's included with, it's, it's included. Well, no, it's, we'll use it for hiring purposes, but we'll use it, a lot of it for the students, for the college process, right? So like the guidance department will be sharing the school profile and district profile with colleges so that they have an understanding, context in which to look at the information that they're getting as well. But so the first thing was, are we, do we have a profile? Do we have, are we publicizing ourselves for potential employees and your families in the, in the best possible way? And so that's one thing that we are continuing to work on and kind of looking at. I, I was thinking the other way, which I hadn't necessarily thought of how the committee was hoping, hoping to have everything collated. But one of the things, because we had talked so much about data, I think each year we're giving you more and more data, but we've, we've flooded you with a lot of data for the budget process this year.
Yeah.
And that hasn't always been, the data hasn't always been discussed, but it has always been given to the committee members, to the packets. And so, and we also, a lot of times something, the data will go before a subcommittee meeting, right? So then I guess that is kind of a question, is there, at what point then, and who decides? If it goes from this one subcommittee then to everybody or, you know, that's true. That's the thing to think about when you think in terms of like the process.
Right.
I do feel like it should go in the pack, like the packet is still, to me, the mechanism by which this committee should be looking at, you know, most information that comes before it. Because that's the public, that's the public piece of it and that's the transparency piece that we have, that we have to do. We shouldn't be making decisions based on data that's as a public.
Right, like I don't want, like I, I got sort of worried when I was refreshing my memory about these and saw like via Google Drive and I'm like, wait a minute, I don't want to duplicate or create some new process or something. Any other thoughts on this? I mean, I know, we can't, Catherine and I just sort of populated this to, to start a discussion, but obviously we can't predeliberate on our own goal progress. So looking for any conversation or feedback? The next one was, under this was.
I would just say.
Yep.
Well, maybe that's deliberating on our progress, but.
No, 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 we can't, we can't hear.
Yes, our packet data does go into Google Drive, I think it's Chaffey.
Sure.
And so all the data that is in the packet is in the school committee Google Drive, yeah.
The other part here is ensure all FY25 budgetary decisions are day-driven. And as you've spoken to, I think, you know, just each year that passes, we do get a little bit deeper and deeper. Goal two for social emotional wellbeing was to form a school start time working group to look for any feasible short-term. I don't know why I'm reading it. I wrote in progress slash delayed because we did assign ourselves, which we knew was an ambitious target of December 2023, but that was to relate with the budget timeline. It's clear you guys are doing a very thoughtful process, but I just wrote delayed because, you know, it had such a specific timeline on that. Any other thoughts to share there? Goal three, the finance subcommittee will continue the process of reviewing all fees. So if, if this sounds new to anyone that's watching at home, the finance subcommittee made a, started this process last year. I think we looked at three or four deep dive reviews of any of our fee-based programs. I can't off the top of my head think of which ones we did last year, but.
We started with bus, we looked at the bus.
Looked at bus, early arrival, I think was one of them. Parking fee, thank you Jenny. And the intention is, I think those are very valuable conversations and research that like we have that data, like to your point, and the subcommittee has those, has that flexibility to have those conversations more in-depth. We just have, had a late start this year, but we hope to revisit one or two more this spring, I think. Any other backer questions on goal three? I don't know why I'm scrolling my own page, but. Goal four is a DEI policy review. Catherine, do you want to speak to this one or are you chair? I'm sorry.
I am.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so this is the lens that we've been using as we look at the policies. As we've talked about before, we started trying to make kind of low-hanging fruit language changes, like things such as pronouns, updates, other inclusive language updates to the policies. They were so widespread that we decided that was going to just spend a lot of subcommittee and committee time updating policies, many of which needed further review for other, for content as well. And so we decided the wiser thing would be flagged, we have those flagged in our database. We actually, in many cases, have, have draft language in our, in our working documents. And so as those policies get reviewed, those updates will come. But otherwise, the lens is still there. We talked about looking at curriculum materials, library materials and our policies on that. That's again, to be as, make sure that we are being as inclusive in our materials as possible. And then the other piece is we've had some conversations and have actually met with Gerard Coughlin about use of timeout spaces in the district. And again, that's with the DEI lens as well. And so that's still our, our focus and our thrust.
Any questions or reactions to goal four? Okay, I apologize, I turned this, Catherine, I apologize, I turned the slideshow into a PDF for the packet. So the, is it GIF, GIF? I never know. On the next slide.
It should have been animated.
It should have been animated.
Oh, Phil.
Is he doing this?
You can do it.
Yes. Your imagination can fill it in. But I think the point, you know, is that there's a lot of work that goes on in between these Monday night meetings by our valuable subcommittees and just as a committee. So I think that that's the point here. I think it's, it's helpful that we are moving towards this process of setting goals for ourselves and holding ourselves accountable for things. And we will just continue to refine that. Any final points, Catherine?
Just disappointed you turned me Kermit into a picture. I mean, he was very animated.
Sorry.
No, I, I think this is, I, I think the rest of the committee have found this helpful. And I, I know I have found it helpful as a committee member, just going through conversations and as we've had meetings and stuff as the year has gone on. And, you know, I, I kind of have these at the back of my mind going, oh, actually, yeah, this is something that we had highlighted. So I don't know about the others, but I have found it really helpful for us.
Yep. Okay.
Oh, there it is. Look at that.
Look at that.
Didn't we run GIPs?
Punching away.
All right, thank you very much, Catherine, for the presentation. I appreciate that. And we will move on to the budget discussion. I didn't have a specific order in mind. I think it's, one, one thing might be to, yeah, let's start there. And you, were you going to mention how that came about?
Yep.
Okay, why would we do that?
So I, and we'll get this in the packet, it's not in the packet yet, but we'll get it in, in the packet tomorrow morning. So last select board meeting, it was on the 23rd, the select board met to, and during their meeting, they actually voted to reduce the overall override request by $500,000. And so then they tasked town manager Kristen Last to look at that number and to figure out what does that mean to the allocation. So then she shared with us the need for us to reduce that request by $350,000.
Do you want to speak to that? Cause I got, I was asked that question, how that split was determined.
So when, when Kristen had looked at it, Kristen looked at the way in which the, the division throughout the budget was primarily 70, 30%. And so in looking at the needs and requests, because I know a comment was made at the select board meeting that it's typically like 50, 50, but when she actually looked at the breakdown, it's closer to 70, 30. And so that's the way in which.
And I think that to clarify, if you look at the town budget documents, your, your, that, that equation is taking out all of the debt service, the enterprise funds, all of that, and just putting it aside and just saying how much is going to town departments and how much is going to school? Which is not, which is kind of like how the new growth split is usually done, but it's different than maybe what we talked about in Budget Task Force.
It's also, it's, it's when, in, in the Budget Task Force, when we did look at it, I believe the number when we, when we were comparing it to other districts, it was 68%.
Yeah, yeah.
And so.
So it's close.
It's close.
Yeah.
So that's how the, the division of, I was going to say, I was looking to see if I could see in her email the exact language that she used to break it down, but it was, what we looked at then was the $350,000. And so what we, what we did is we looked at what we had already identified as part of the no override reductions and to see what might we be able to move into the override reductions. So if you, well, if, on, on the next slide, I guess we could show those slides.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I'll pull them up.
For Friday.
Are you looking for that or do you need one to share with me again? So the first slide, it's slide, I continued to just add to the, the other slide presentation so that we just have everything in one spot, trying to then articulate the changes. I did make it a change at the very beginning, just to say that we're continuing this so that if anybody was reading it for the first time, they would actually see that all these additions exist later on as opposed to trying to figure out why this doesn't make sense. So on slide 55, I break down again what we had again for FY24 budget, what our initial projection was when we were working towards the Budget Task Force, which was an 8.18% increase. Then the actual recommended needs request that we had identified that I presented to you earlier in December, which was a 7% increase. And so tonight, the updated number would actually end up being a 6.46% increase. So it's slide 55, if you, you probably don't have numbers. Oh, there you go.
There, there.
So you'll see that the number has been reduced $350,000 from the, the $4,615,000 increase to a $4,256,000 increase. So what we did, if you go to the next slide, what we looked at was one of the, I'm going to talk about the second piece first, actually, which is based on, this is the, the second one, the reduction in transportation is the only piece that doesn't actually exist in the B budget. Because when we first presented our budget to you, we hadn't negotiated the, the bus contract. We knew what their bid was, but we hadn't been negotiating that. And so based on the work that Jenny was able to do, we believe that we could reduce the transportation cost by $100,000 based on the adjusted bid that the, the provider had shared with us. We still haven't signed that contract yet, but that's, this is at least the, the most recent bid. So then the other three pieces, reducing comp reserve, we're recommending that to meet this, this number, we would reduce it by $114,997. And what that does is that impacts our, the flexibility that we have because we still have non-union negotiations or non-union contracts that, that we present to you at the end of the year, those individual contracts as well as, well, if that's what it is. So it increases our flexibility there as we're trying to negotiate, it decreases, thank you. Did I say that? I just said impacts, okay. So that still leaves the comp reserve for what we have set aside for units A, B, and C, for unit G that's in the process, hopefully being ratified soon. And, and that would be, and so that would be the change there. In this, we are recommending that we decrease the, the four middle school interventionists. So there is a reading interventionist and a middle, and a math interventionist at each of the middle schools. And so when we look at the, the cost there, it'd be $90,000 if we were to remove that intervention at the middle school level. And then one of the things that we had identified in our, in our no override budget was increasing our preschool revolving fund offset by 50,000, which brings us very close to everything that we anticipate bringing in, in the, in the preschool revolving account. And that total brings us to $355,781. So that is, that would be our recommendation. You voted to approve the recommended budget beforehand. Because we still have another FinCom meeting on the first, my recommendation to you would not be to take any action on this, but to see, because this number might still change again, rather than voting multiple times. But at some point, you will, if, if, if we move forward with this, you would have to make a, you would have to change your.
Yeah. I'm sure there are questions on this or.
You'd have to vote again.
You'd have to vote again.
Reaction, but I just wanted, I just wanted to take that minute to point out that there is another FinCom hearing this Thursday. is another FinCom hearing this Thursday with any follow-up from schools, general government, land management, debt service, risk management, capital and revenue presentations. And then FinCom is also scheduled for another meeting this time next week, February 5th, which is when they expected to be able to make their recommendations. So, and then we are expecting that select board at their meetings in February, February 13th, and if needed, February 20th, would really narrow in on an override strategy and an override amount. So we're getting close, but I agree that we could wait until our next meeting to see if there's any final moving parts and vote then or consider voting again. Any reaction, questions, concerns? Catherine, bless you.
Catherine.
No questions, sorry.
To these new.
Not little bombs, because I think she took her picture out.
She's hidden.
Yeah, she's there.
She's there.
She's listening.
Any reactions, concerns, questions for Dr. Chu on these? You know, they, they, we have, they have come to us before as part of the B budget, except for, like you said, transportation.
Right.
Ming Chen.
Yeah, so, so, so those are a combination of different pieces. I think like last, last time in the last school committee meeting, like now what's some confusion about like how to go about it? Because if, if, if the request amount is going to be reduced, at that time, people say, hey, maybe like we should have a tier one, tier two, tier three, like ranking system about all those items, then like people say, hey, when it hits this target, then those will be gone. Then if this target, this will be gone. So this is actually pulling from multiple pieces, which I don't know if like the previous reduction are in, in the order of importance or order of priority. So like it's hard to evaluate like whether this actually is the priority we are actually looking at, right? So, and then if like we're being, being asked to do more reduction, so what's the methodology go behind this decisions? Because like pretty sure you have good reasons, but on the other hand, if there is a methodology which we can follow, then we know, hey, if people say, hey, you reduce 1 million, then that's where we are going to hit. Reduce 1.5 million, that's where we're going to hit. Then people have more, for people to watch and then look at your reduction, people will actually have more comfortable level, say, hey, maybe I'm okay with going to this step. Maybe I'm not okay with going further, right? So like that's where, like, this doesn't actually give, give people that.
Right. In, in some regards, as when we had this first number given to us, and then based on the feedback that we have been hearing through the, through the FinCom hearings, as well as the questions that you all had for us in the first place, I think we have unofficially been thinking in terms of a tier, right? And so this would be tier one, right? If you will, if that would be the, what, what we would move from the B budget into the other budget. And I will tell you, the methodology behind this was that the everything, the, the, the three pieces, the comp reserve, the transportation, and the preschool revolving fund were the first things that we, we had looked at. Because of the B list, they have, they don't impact directly students. Okay? So then after that, everything left on, on the B list has an impact on the classroom in a different way. And so that's why we started with the, with the middle school interventionists. Because we felt like of the supports that exist historically, we have, we have had times when, when some of those roles weren't filled. And so we know what needed to be done to help support that. It's still not, it's still not an ideal situation, and I don't recommend, I, I don't want us to be impacting the classrooms in the way that any of the B budget items impact the classroom, but we have prioritized it in that way.
And, and so for example, if I throw out a hypothetical question, say, hey, you need to actually reduce another half a million dollars from, from your request, then what's, what's going to be gone next?
Well, we'll, we'll be prioritizing it. I would be bringing, I would be, I would be saying, these are the other things in terms of, whereas we didn't have it as a prioritized list. We didn't present it to you as a, as a, as a prioritized list. If, if that's then what I'm tasked to do, I will have to give you my recommendations based on what the target is.
Yeah. I, I think like, yeah, to, to, to actually have this information beforehand probably will make the committee understand where it could end up with. Right now, I'm guessing right now, because I don't really know where it's going to end up with.
Right.
Because from the FinCom meeting, clearly they're not going to, well, where they know, right, 7% is not going to fly. So I don't know exactly what percentage is going to fly. So that means we still have to look at other things. So we need to have a, well, at least like now got to have a discussion about what comes next.
So one thing I'm pulling out of your comments, which is open for everybody to respond to, but out of the one, two, three, four, five, six other items that were in the B budget, would it be helpful if, because we, we're scheduled to be in session on February, on this Thursday with Finance Committee, and then we have one more scheduled meeting, I don't know why I said one more. We have, our next scheduled meeting would be February 12th, Monday, which we might be asked to pivot or, or make other decisions at that meeting. Would it be helpful if administration did rank what's left before Thursday?
100%.
And do we have a, more members of the committee that agree with that request? Is everyone clear on what I was?
I, can I just, as I even see some faces, I, I will say, I can certainly do that. I would assume that based on just your understanding of what we have shared with you, that individually, you're all doing that as well. Yes.
Yeah, but I want to say your recommendation as well.
That's right.
Because like a lot of time, we rely on your expertise. Because you are running a school system, like knowing more than like bells and whistles, all the details. We are actually sitting here and then like doing our own calculations, but like your expertise is the most important one.
And I, and I do appreciate that. I, I, which is why I kind of, from the beginning, have tried to be very solid about A budget, B budget. I wasn't going to be presenting a third budget until people then gave you a specific charge to develop different ones.
Is that just, I mean, it's only two days away. Does that feel like, before I, before I open it back up to the committee, I just want to know.
I don't, I, I can tell you, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable talking about it right now.
Sure.
Yeah.
But I have a prioritized list. I mean, I, I know, I, I know what it, but if, but if somebody comes back, it's like, that's why I tried to say from the beginning, the B list is bad. It is a bad scenario. It has, it has negative impacts on our school district. And so it, it's very important for everybody to understand that.
Right.
That then when I start coming back, that's why I don't want to say, well, it's bad, but this is the order of.
Of badness.
Of badness, right? So it's like, this is just the impact. In some cases, it's going to be differing of opinions based on perspectives, right? But, you know, we are.
And we can always react to your prioritization.
That's right.
But like Ming Chen said, it's another data point. Yeah, Sean?
In, in light of the question, which was, you know, should the committee consider? I don't know. There's something that strikes me off about having a list like that, right? Like, it almost feels like we're pitting certain departments of the school district against each other.
Yep.
Or like, it's like Sophie's Choice. It's, it's a weird. So anyways, what, with the, it strikes me that the district was tasked with, with finding this 388, 100,000.
350.
350,000.
70%.
So we did that, and it's the committee's obligation to react to that. So I, I don't think we need to. If, if we're tasked again to come up with more money, then okay, so be it, but I don't know. Something about getting a list and sharing it with the public strikes me as counterproductive.
I mean, that's where I'm at too. Plus, there's still, we're not going to know that much more on Thursday. We still don't know what the override amount would be. We, I think until that's all solid, we don't have any decisions to make. You know, we have this as an initial guess of what we might be reducing further. I'd prefer to wait until we just have a little more confidence in the numbers.
I, I think, I, I hear you. I, I agree, it's all very uncomfortable to talk about positions. The one thing that I'm reflecting on from Ming Chen's comment though, is that it, it gives the public sort of an understanding of what level, you know, they all might with their own individual lived experiences, of course, and they're all, their own, like you said, we all might be doing our own prioritization. But it does sort of help someone understand, okay, if the schools went down this much, it would be this level, I don't know.
But I think that's what, isn't that what budget B is for?
Right. I think it's just if, if there's someplace in the middle, it helps translate to the public.
Because I think my concern about that, from a management perspective, I think it's, it's really bad for morale.
Yep.
And I think that as these, and, and the fact about this list is like, it's a thought process that, you know, have, being a manager in my own work and, and having during COVID to have to think about things of this nature, because the, the COVID budget year was so complicated, it's something that you're, you're considering out, but it's not set in stone. And so things are in flux, and it could cause unnecessary pain and stress when maybe those aren't decisions that are going to be the final decisions. And I think that, I also think it's, I, I don't think it's appropriate for committee members to talk about what will or will not pass, that's not our role, and it's for the voters to decide, and we have no idea what they're going to do at this time. So I don't think that's appropriate to discuss in this room. But I think that we have two proposals, and it's clear that people are trying really hard on all sorts of committees to spend time to, to talk about what, what it might look like.
I think those are fair points. And I, I agree with you, I don't think we should hypothesize on what the voters will decide, but we did hear from FinCom members a request to tighten our belts, however you interpret that. So even if we can't predict the town meeting attendees or the wider voter ballot, you know, there is that to consider. I mean, Bill, you looked like you were going to say something.
No, I was just going to say, I, I know the Finance Committee has talked about, you know, this is, we're talking about a potential multi-year, you know, endeavor here. So we want to think about as well the trade-offs that we're willing to make this year that potentially could have ramifications for future years as well and compounding at that. So I mean, I think this is, I think Dr. Chu and his administration have put forth what is a very challenging obstacle and put forth their budget. And, and we voted on, you know, and we will come back to the table with Finance Committee and, and, and other requests from the town manager Kristen Last, but I think we are, this is where we're at right now, so.
Okay.
Catherine, how's your handle?
I'm just wondering, and if, I don't know if anyone else has considered or thought about this, if we would want to consider perhaps doing an extra meeting after Thursday, you know, just to kind of regroup and discuss anything, again, from FinCom. I, I don't know if I like at this point that we're leaving, we would potentially be leaving a conversation another two weeks before, you know, kind of coming back, back to this again, because I do think there is still, you know, a lot that needs to be discussed maybe as we get closer to the final date and final numbers.
There might not be, everybody might not be able to do that.
Sure. Yeah. Conflicts and everything.
And you also mentioned the February 5th, the, the next Monday.
Yes.
Is when they, is when they are now scheduled to share their recommendations.
Yeah. So that would be our, our off Monday on February 5th. But I, I think I hear Catherine's point, which is that we, our February meetings are the 12th and the 26th, and, you know, just from conversations and listening to Select Board and FinCom, they will be publishing their FinCom book and all of that like the last week of February. So we will be limited sort of in our reaction time.
But again, we, how much information will we have in the next week?
Yeah.
That we can act on? I mean, they're meeting on the 5th, Select Board's the 6th.
I don't think so. I think they're meeting on the 13th.
The 13th, sorry, the 13th.
Yeah.
I mean, if anything, I would say maybe we need an off meeting after that.
Vacation week though.
The 19th. Is that Monday, the 19th?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's vacation week though, but.
I mean.
So.
Whatever we need to do. I mean, we can get a quorum remotely on February 12th.
No, I'm not concerned about like the committee members, but the general public, they may be out of town, right? So you basically are cutting off a huge portion of the constituents out of your like meeting.
I just think timing wise, I think that's when it will be critical, because that's when we're going to know a lot more.
Yeah.
About what's coming versus right now. I feel like we're still, we've done our part, done what's been asked, and we're kind of waiting to see how it all settles out a little bit townwide.
And we could even, I mean, there, well, we could maybe play with like later that week.
We've got Catherine again.
Oh, Catherine.
Just to piggyback on what Chris said there, or follow up, I should say, you know, Chris, you were saying we could have done our thing, our part. I know we've voted on what is, what was the A budget, and already we're now having to relook at it based on what Select Board came back. You know, I, I feel that there's another vote in our, in the very near future for us as to, okay, well, what would that final budget look like once we've potentially had costs or cuts or adjustments? And I don't, I think we, we need to have some time to actually discuss that, because I, I will be honest, I mean, that's even with the middle school interventionists being there and that potential extra cut, I do think there's some discussion and data around it needed. So I would hope that we have more time to look into what would essentially be our final budget.
On that point, I guess I would encourage everyone, all seven of us, to look again more closely at the B budget items, and if there's anything that you feel like we haven't fully discussed or additional data that you do want to request, you know, we need to give administration time to, to, to react to that.
Sorry, Val, could I just ask, I know in our last meeting, we had talked about following up on athletic, kind of the athletic fees and stuff and the bus fees.
Yep.
Do you have that data yet?
Yep. So we can, we have a couple more things budget related to go to. This was the sort of opener.
Okay. Okay. Perfect.
Sorry.
I don't know.
I, I think like for the Finance Subcommittee members, we got a little bit of advance warning about 350, right? But full committee doesn't, right? And that's where I, that's why I say like, for the full committee to come into the meeting without any background of knowledge, and then suddenly like this is being presented, that's something like your brain may not be able to actually process all this data in such a short time and have a vote. That's why I like, I see like, have your, have your own thinking, have, you know, looking into all those options, but like also rely on the administration's expertise. But everybody probably will have a tiered system.
Yeah.
Like no matter people like it or not.
Right.
So we do have a couple more budget pieces of information that I think are helpful to, for the seven of us and for anyone watching to, to walk through. Is it okay, Jenny, do you want to come up to the microphone so we can walk through or briefly cover? And the committee has access to that same document from Finance Subcommittee for the, why don't we start with the bus fee, because that's a little bit more bounded? Do you have that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you still have that?
This one? I know. I love that one though.
Oh, okay. Great.
I really like bringing it up. Is it on this first?
Nope. All the way over bus.
So just quickly, as a reminder to everybody, the, one of the reasons why I mentioned the bus fees as well too, because when we talked about it in the Subcommittee meeting, the bus fees were something that we reviewed last year. And at that time, we looked, we were looking at it with a different perspective.
Right.
And so, so what the, what we did and what Jenny was able to do was to kind of show some different potential scenarios.
So the request from our, sort of our last meeting too, was. So the request from our, sort of our last meeting, too, was, you know, if we're in the B budget scenario and there is no additional revenue, would we, right now, we haven't taken an action on fees, but would we in a no override scenario? And I think that like going into town meeting and town election, there's a balance of what we're asking of our families and the burden we're placing on them. So, you know, but just for our due diligence, we talked about this in Finance Subcommittee. So Jenny, if you wanted to just sort of describe the spreadsheet so that committee members know where to look, and then I can speak to what Finance Subcommittee discussed.
Okay, sure. We talk about the data-driven decision. So we just gather the data for last five fiscal year. Hopefully those data can help you to make better decision. Here you can see in the last five fiscal year, from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 23, in the bus revenue and bus expenditure. The average bus revenue for last five fiscal year is 562,694. The average expenditure for last five fiscal year is 431,122. So we do end up with a positive cash flow for last five year, which is 131,572. Based on the fiscal year 24's quarter two data, we now have an ending fund balance with carryover for bus revolving account. That's 881,843. And we did a projection for the remaining of fiscal year 24. And we will probably end up with $748,403 for our ending balance by the end of fiscal year 24. And in fiscal year 25's budget projection, we increase our bus transportation fee offset from 655,000 to 700,000 because we have a little bit capacity in the revolving account. So you can see in the column C, the offset increased to 700,000. We will end up with 737,253 dollars for the ending balance by the end of fiscal year 24. That means by the end of this year, we will just have, you know, the capacity to cover the whole next year's offset amount. We just have a little bit cushion left in our revolving account for fiscal year 25 if we don't change the bus fee. However, if we think about if the override doesn't pass, if we think about increase our projection for the bus fee from $350 per student to 375, the ending balance could also be impacted. Because if the bus costs increase, we might expect less students to take the bus. So in the last five fiscal year, we have average bus participation rate, the rider who pay for the bus fee, about 1,900 students. So the number could drop down to 1,800 students. That's what we used for the projection. If we use 1,800 students times 375 per student, the total revenue we will bring in is 675,000. If we consider the total offset from this account, the ending balance will be 718,903. So that's just something we found out.
And one of the things we talked about in the Finance Subcommittee, too, is that it's really hard to project this out while accounting for someone who might say, that's not worth it for me anymore, so I'm now a car rider or a walker. And then accounting for the family cap, right? Like, we're just doing a straight multiplication to project in the revenue, but.
It's speculation.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not as straightforward as, here's a revenue source, let's twist this knob.
We do have historical data on when we've increased it in the past, so we can look at what past increases have done to ridership. Not necessarily a predictor of what would happen, but at least we know, you know, did that reduce ridership?
And COVID is a factor.
It's hard to tell, right? Sometimes when you raise from 200 to 50, people say, huh, 250 I can still afford. But if you say, oh, 350 to 375, you don't know when the breaking point is.
For 350 to 400, it would feel like maybe more of a jump to families.
But we do see from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22, we increased the bus fee from 150 to 350. Our ridership doesn't have a huge significant change. So the student pay for the bus fee, that was 1818, which is in fiscal year 21. When we more than double the bus fee, the ridership number doesn't have a decrease, actually increase about 30 students.
You mean the paying.
The, the, yes. The paying, yes. The student participation number with the fee actually increased. So it seems like that participation number doesn't have big change based on a percentage of the fee increase.
Any quick reactions or questions?
I think some of the discussion that if we're dealt with the B budget, you know, we're not going to be getting that money from constituents, but we could be getting more money from, you know, it's like the series of trade-offs, right? I mean.
And I would argue, too, that like one of the drivers we are facing is an increase from transportation. So, you know, at least it's not sort of out of nowhere to look to the bus fee. Can you scroll down, too? Because the other thing that I think is helpful is that we included the data from the Budget Task Force on what our comparable districts are also collecting. So there's about four districts that collect more than us. But just.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yep.
I'm just curious, and this again was actually data I discovered in the Budget Task Force. So when we're looking at other districts here and what they're charging for bus fees, and I don't know, Val, if you would know this, because I know you were kind of looking at the data. One of the data, I'm kind of interested in it in actually terms in relation to the total cost of transport to the district. And the reason I'm asking that is, one of the data points that popped up on the Budget Task Force was that Westford kind of landmass wise is pretty much double the size of a lot of our surrounding towns and districts. And I'm just curious, is it costing us more to transport our students compared to other districts? And in particular, these communities here? Because if their transportation costs are potentially lower, but we're still charging a similar fee, do you understand? Sorry.
Yep, that makes sense. I don't have that data. It probably wouldn't be easy to get, right? We'd have to go into each district, pull their transportation costs. But I hear you. I think that point is well taken. Maybe it'd even be quicker. I think I have the existing data set to look at the land area.
It is, it is one of the things, well, we didn't have, we didn't have, because they don't all use the same company. When we were comparing the bid that we received with other districts and just trying to see, okay, is this a fair bid? That was similar. But to Catherine's point, I'd be curious as to if the fuel costs were different, right? So that would be something to see like, you know, because, but what they were actually charging us in comparison to what they were charging another town that doesn't have as much mileage, they weren't, it didn't seem that they were charging us more because we have more miles. But it could be a difference in the fuel costs, which makes sense.
Yeah, I think here it's more about the contract. So like if we can get, hey, like to transport student, how much does it cost per year? Because like the mileage, the fuel cost, the contract value, it ended up like how much I'm spending on this student to transport, right? Is it $1,000, which we're charging 400? Or is it $2,000 and they're charging 800, right? So like that probably is more comparable.
Finding out what their ridership is.
Yeah. Those are interesting, you know, interesting data points, but I don't think they're really accessible.
I mean, you can look up number of roads in each town.
Road miles.
Yeah, road models. It might be interesting, just, you know, divide, divide the fee by that. I don't know. Just, there might be a metric in there that would be useful.
Well, and I guess I want to keep us moving on because I don't think that we need a decision on this. But it was, again, information that we talked about in Finance Subcommittee and something to keep in the back of our mind if the override does fail and we are considering this in the spring. So if you move to the next tab for athletic revolving funds or back a tab, I guess. So this, Catherine, you specifically, did we miss again? No, she already said that. Jenny, do you want to just share a little bit about what you collected for athletics?
That's the similar methodology we use for the bus fee. Also, five years on data you can compare from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 23. Overall, we can, we could break even for athletic revolving fees. As you can see highlighted in green here, the five-year average for the revenue for athletic revolving account is 540,055. And if you scroll down, we can see in the five-year average for revolving account expenditure is 515,420. Overall, we ended up with a positive cash flow for $24,000. And if we look into the individual years, there are two fiscal year. We have negative cash flow, which is fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 23. That means our total revenue was not sufficient to support our athletic expenditure account, which highlighted here in yellow. And something I would like to emphasize here is increase in the transportation costs for athletic program. We can see an increase from fiscal year 22's, 138,000 to 179,000. That's 40,000 increase just for athletic transportation fee. For fiscal year 24, we are expecting the amount remain the same because there's no change based on the cost. But in fiscal year 25, based on the current call we already received, the athletic round costs already increased from $250 per round, minimum cost, to $400 minimum cost. So the cost for the transportation, just for athletic, we, based on the projection, it will probably double up. So if you see the ending balance, as of this point, we still have 302,000 by the mid-year of fiscal year 24. We will probably end it up around $200,000 for the fund balance by the end of fiscal year 24. If we double up our transportation costs in fiscal year 25, we might, this fund balance will be quickly drawn down to zero. So that's the reality for the athletic revolving account. And also you can see in the right side of this spreadsheet, we can tell, just scroll to the right. We summarize the data so you can see how much actually costs us for an athletic program from two different funding sources. One portion is from general fund, the other portion is from revolving account. In fiscal year 23, the total cost we pay from general fund is 587,000. The revolving account help us to supplement 736,000. So the program costs us $1,323,380. Fiscal year 22, it costs us $1,164,527. So that's the two funding sources for athletic revolving account.
And then in our Finance Subcommittee meeting, we also reviewed below on the left is the stipends per sport. Now, these are totals, so there could be multiple coaches that split these, but just interesting to see for the public or anyone watching at home. Any questions?
I'll just be honest, only seeing this data now, I kind of need to process and mull it over.
Yep.
So Jenny, I might follow up with some questions or next time.
Sure. And this one doesn't have the Budget Task Force from, data from the other towns, but it's similar to bus in that we are like the fourth or the fifth highest for the fee for high school athletic fee for first sport. And we are definitely the highest for the middle school athletic fee for sport. So, you know, no decision point tonight, but just additional data that has been collected, talked through the Finance Subcommittee and can be shared with the, and we'll get those in the packet. Yeah, great. Thank you. Do you want to pull up the documents you have ready? So I don't think we talked about this yet, but Dr. Chu and I have been participating in two road shows. We did two last week with, oh my gosh, where were we?
The first one was League of Women Voters, and then the second one was at the Senior Center.
Thank you. And we've got a couple more coming. But one, you know, I've been cataloging the questions that we get asked from the attendees and the audiences and sort of reflecting on that based on what we've been hearing from FinCom. And just sort of, I put together my own little data points. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Sean, Chris has had this up like all meeting, ready to go. So one thing I feel like we've been hearing is, and depending on like your own lived experience, right? Like families who are watching or might remember one particular previous budget reduction, right? And it gets blurry on what years happened and what. And so I just thought it was nice to see objectively laid out. And this did come to finance in early January. And I was reminded that these are proposed. We are working to confirm that whether, like what was actually, sometimes there are changes between like a budget proposal and what was actually, you know, comes to fruition, yeah, at the end of the year. So there's a grain of salt here, but, and I tried to pull out anything that we've done for enrollment adjustments along the way. So that's, I think, what I found really powerful was to see that like we have, we have kept ratcheting down our general education classroom teachers in elementary and middle. I didn't, I should have added like a total row at the bottom, but you can see that there have been some changes at WA and, but a very sort of drumbeat, especially at the middle school and elementaries. And then I was just trying to capture and summarize, this might be a lot of data for some, but I think it's a summary of these last 10 years of budget conversations, budget presentations. What I also noticed was, like you can see the FTE net, so full-time equivalency, is largely positive up until like FY19, right? We were adding staff. And we've gotten the question here and there about what's, you know, our enrollment has gone down over the last X years. Why do we still have so many staff? Or where is the staff changing? That data as like one clean pull is hard to do with our systems. So this was the quickest way I could think to do it, and it was not quick, but, which is, you can see that most of the adds that have happened are special education or preschool or ELL, adjustment counselors.
Psychologists.
Yep.
Psychologists in '22.
Yep, counselors, psychologists, nurse. They're staff based on our students' needs. And so I just thought that was helpful to have all in one place. Are there any? Are there any questions?
Based on students, in some cases, required additions.
Sure, yep, yep.
We didn't have it.
Wasn't a choice.
Wasn't a choice.
Yep, yep. Um, related to that, the next slide, like I said, one of the things, the themes I'm hearing sometimes in conversations or these roadshow conversations is, um, how the school district, especially if you don't have children in the district anymore, how have the district changed, the services that we're offering, the costs have gone up, right? Like, people want to understand a little bit more about what's different about, um, school now versus then. And, uh, so I was, I, I took the October 1st enrollment data by grade level. Um, blue is elementary, red is middle, and yellow is WA. And then added a graph of our high-need students, so that, the, the data point is, the marker is the number, but it, the label is the percentage. And you can see, I included, I don't know if that's readable here, but, um, Desi defines high needs as, uh, low-income, economically disadvantaged, English learner, or former English learner, or a student with disabilities. So it's, it's a bigger category, but it does, I think, help, uh, describe why the staff has been added as they have over the past couple of years and what needs we are servicing and educating versus, um, maybe 10 years ago. And I, I thought it was also interesting to see the enrollment, like some, you know, what is that? Middle school has sort of ebbed along, elementary has, has gone much further down. And then WA has, I think it's almost like 250 students since 2018. So it's really, um, like the, what am I looking for? The slope, um, has, is different based on each grade level. Any other? Okay.
That's great.
Um, so, and then a total change gears is another feedback I think we've heard is, came up in last week's FinCom meeting, was about the amount in our comp reserve. There is also a document in our packet that breaks down comp reserve, which we just want to admit is not, you know, best practice to sort of highlight and talk about, right? That is a negotiation technique to have a comp reserve. Um, but we, with all the scrutiny and the, and sort of the rightful questions that we are getting, I thought it was helpful if we just clarify, um, what that amount is and, um, remind everyone of the process that got us to that commitment for, um, for average pay. Um, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read all of this, but all of us are aware. Um, but we have data that shows as part of our, um, analysis last year that our teacher salaries were behind our benchmark districts. And the percentage increases that they would need to reach average are outlined on the slide. Um, and that is built into our Budget A request and built into the override. Um, and I think, feel free to add anything, but we have as a town made that commitment over and over again to offer our employees average pay so that they are not at a disadvantage for working in Westford. This is not, competitive pay does not mean the top
No.
Of our benchmarks. This is right in the middle, the average. Um, and like I said, this is not, uh, this is, all we, all I can say is that the data supports what's on this slide, but, you know, we would obviously let this play out in collective bargaining, um, process. Anything that I've
No, I think that this, adding this slide, I mean, we, we had used this in another presentation when we were originally talking about the dark districts and the data that showed where the gap was specifically. Um, and this puts it all together in one spot because there are questions as to this, the 3%. The settled contract for units A, B, and C, which are really all one unit, um, is for a 3% in FY25, but the target has always been for 4.6. And so a question has come up as to, well, why doesn't the contract articulate that? And when we were, when we were negotiating the contract, um, we hadn't built the FY25 budget yet.
Right.
And so while we know that the data said that this is where the target should be, we, we had not even started building the FY25 budget to see if that would be a feasible thing for us to, to, to meet. And so I think that's an important thing for people to understand why you wouldn't negotiate a specific number, um, outside of what was settled for with the 3%.
And I would add too that the budget task force work hadn't wrapped up yet to
Right.
I mean, there was, if you go back in time, sort of in the spring, there was still the hope that, you know, we could get additional revenue from the cannabis excise tax or economic development, like, all of those things seemed a little bit more optimistic at the time. It did not seem like at that time that the override was going to be our only tool in order to get this.
Right.
So, um, you know, we, I think we made that commitment, but gave the flexibility. Okay, so those are just, um, the only other budget topic that I wanted to add, uh, uh, share from the community, for the, for anyone watching and for the committee, is that I was copied on that email about, um, a state aid projection. Do, do you have that handy Jenny? Or I can, I can read it too. Um, it's, it's on the same one as the 70/30
Yeah.
Split. So if anyone's been following the state, the governor released her budget. We always start with some projections and then adjust as we get more information, and the governor's budget is just the first step. We know that it can still continue to change, but, um, from the preliminary cherry sheets, you might see a dead, a headline that says, you know, school state aid is, you know, going up X million. What does that mean for Westford?
Right.
Jenny, did you want to read that or I can?
Um, okay, and, uh,
Sorry to put you on the spot, I didn't.
The preliminary cherry sheet today, and it shows the news is not favorable with the conservative 1% revenue increase to the general fund revenue was almost spot, spot on for the amount of 8,830. The state and county assessment increased by 20% from last school year, last year's total assessment. The net general fund impact is, uh, 30,000, 3,383
Eighty.
Dollar less in addition of the funding.
Stop there, stop there just one second Jenny, because I feel like that's an important thing to kind of share with everybody, the difference between what, the, the, and then when the assessments come in. It's like the idea that the aid increased, but then as, so did the assessments.
Yes.
And, and not by very much, right? Like, so if you read a headline, I guess that's my takeaway here, is that Westford's projections were close and are only going up by 80% before the assessments, which is what sort of the state takes, the state takes back, which is the next paragraph.
Mm-hmm. In addition, the funding for public libraries was 423 short for the projection, and the school choice was 39,854 short of the projection. Overall, we are receiving 120,670 less in revenue.
Yeah. So, again, if you're seeing news stories or whatever about, I'm sorry to keep harping on it, but I just think that it's, it's tempting
That's not us.
It's tempting to see, you know, promising state-level information and wonder what that means for Westford, but it is not some silver bullet or saving.
So, so what can be done? Because people voted for the millionaire tax in hope that some of the money will be spent on our education, but we got nothing, so what can be done?
I don't have the answer to that, Ming Chen, if I did. Um, so, yeah, I don't, I'm just trying to share the information.
Right.
But I, I share your frustration. Um, anything that I've missed budget-wise? Any reactions to things? I know, I know there's been kind of a lot of information for the committee.
That, uh, that, that slide about the, uh, the FTE, I think is terrific. I think it shows, especially over the last few years, you know, and you tend to get focused on certain schools or what's going to be cut, but I mean, it, there seems to be a equitable, you know, look at across the programs and the levels here, so I think you're looking at that.
And I, I didn't say this at the time, but one of the other questions we've gotten at the roadshow sort of is like, what efficiencies have happened over time?
Yeah.
And so this is one place to go to say, listen, there have been tough, you know, reductions and decisions made along the way that, you know, starting four, five years ago, um, to, to live within those, you know, sub-3% increases.
Right.
Yeah, Sean.
And I wonder too, do, do those numbers, does that account for retirements that we never fill for vacancies?
They, they would include any, like, I manually went back to all of the budget presentations
Got it.
From those years. So there, there is a couple of times where I remember, like, there was a, um, like a middle school or a high school digital learning specialist that said, like, will not fill, you know, retirement.
Right.
So anytime that was captured, I, I moved, I carried that data on.
Okay.
Yeah. Because that's still, you know, a reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still FTE.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for doing, because I feel like, at, at least the years that I've been on the committee, we're constantly talking about prior years, right?
Yeah.
And it's like, you speak hypothetically about it, and you hope you get it right, you're like, wow, you know, we did this, I think, you know?
Yeah.
It's like, it's nice to have it all in one place, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't it be helpful if we had a Google Drive where this could live then?
Absolutely not, no.
I would create it in Google Drive right now, that's where I pulled it up from.
From the meeting package.
Yeah.
And it will go into the, the public one, I'm sorry it wasn't
But yes, for, for, for future generations of committees, it would be nice, things like that, to be able to build on that.
Right. Here's a history snapshot. Yep. Okay, we are, we are fading fast. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn if there's no last questions.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Ming Chen?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye with a broken pen. Sean?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
Great. Thank you guys. Good night.